Twenty twenty-two. Can we introduce the members, please?
Molly Friedland.
Mark Rich, board member.
Nelson Gill, board member.
John Delio, chair.
Rick Lyles, vice chair, the Kangi alternate.
Item number two, adoption of minutes from the November 2nd, 2022, regular meeting.
So moved.
Any additions or deletions that anybody wants to throw in there? If not as a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Item number three, revision to approved subdivision entitled Rock and Stair Ledges subdivision for applicant owner Janet Bosworth. The proposal is to amend lot lines conveying 1.96 acres of land from one lot and a budding lot within the subdivision, creating approximately five acre lot at 84 Gator Way, tax map 93, Lot 3-2 in the rural resource protection and general development zoning districts. And this is Janet Bosworth.
Hi. Am I supposed to stand?
No. Nope, you're good.
You're special. You can just stay seated.
You got a mic right there. So just explain what we're doing.
So I wanted my line further away from the house, so I purchased two acres of budding land, well, almost two acres, in that subdivision, which was three lots, it's still three lots. So the only thing that changed is that one line of mine, and everything else remained the same. There's, yeah, it's just staying three lots.
And there's basically isn't, I mean, there's not an additional house or anything going on?
No.
Just a lot line adjustment?
No, it was, it ran right close to my house, and it's also on this road that, where there was some tree growth cutting and stuff, so they let me purchase that so that I wouldn't have to deal with it in the future, so.
I would ask the board if there's any questions of Janet?
I have none.
Any issues from staff? I can't imagine there's any issues.
Only reason it's here is it's in a subdivision. The sale already happened, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I will open this for a public hearing. And I don't think anybody in the audience is here for this.
None of the neighbors were allowed to come.
Anybody on Zoom? Nate, for this?
Nobody on Zoom, please.
Okay, then I'll close the public hearing. What would the board like to do?
I'll make a motion, if you like.
That would be good.
I'll make a motion to accept the revision to an approved subdivision entitled Rock and Stair Ledges subdivision for applicant owner Janet Bosworth.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay.
I'll get them to sign everything, and get motion by tomorrow or Monday. Get them to hand out the other register.
Okay.
I'm here. Ready?
Oh, okay. All right. Sweet.
Good again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Come back again with such an easy thing.
Come back anytime.
Item number four, final plan review for major use site development entitled Bogey Brook Substation Expansion for applicant owner Versum Power. The proposal is to expand the substation yard. The property is a 51.73 acre lot located at 17 Industrial Road, tax map 59, Lot 14, in the urban zoning district. Gentlemen, identify yourselves, please.
I'm Sean Hale from VHB.
I'm Jeff Finn, and I'm contracted to Versum Power.
Okay. We met you last month. Why don't you just kind of give us another summary of what we're here for?
Well, I guess we'll just start where we left off, so this is our second hearing, and nothing has really changed with the project since the last meeting. We did respond to the board's request to add a few additions to the plans, and most recently, we added the signature block and provided the MyLars and the paper copies, which hopefully arrived today. Oh, nice. Great. Okay, so they're here. I can't remember if we had provided an update, oh, the sound study, thank you for reminding me, and we had submitted the requested sound study that was requested at the last hearing. We filed the site law application, I honestly can't remember if we had done that at the time of the last hearing or not, and we have gotten a basically receipt from DEP acknowledging that they are now starting their formal review of the site law application, but we haven't gotten any comments or anything further from DEP at this time. And we just submitted the core application for the project this afternoon, as a matter of fact, so all the permits for the project have been submitted. And that's kind of the things that have happened since the last hearing.
I think I asked this last time, but there was a little bit of snafu with the butter notices, that's all cleared up.
Yeah, I went to the right, I buttered this time.
And you did, I saw the sound study. I guess my question is, that had to go to the state as well?
Yes.
And what did they say?
We haven't received any comments.
Oh, that's what you haven't received?
Yeah.
Okay. When is that expected?
That's a great question.
Thank you.
The state is not under any timeline for amendments. It's a site law amendment application, so we're kind of at the mercy of DEP's schedule. We hope to get it soon, but there is no statutory timeline that they need to meet.
If we were to approve this, could we approve it with a condition that's subject to the state saying, or accepting, I guess, your study, their study? Do we do that?
You kind of, neither here nor there, though, because they can't move forward without the DEP's approval anyway, so you're just confirming they need to go to DEP, which they've already done.
Interesting turn of events.
So we probably should approve it in that manner, if that sounds like.
Say what?
So we probably should, if there's an approval forthcoming, that's probably the manner in which it should happen, it sounds like.
Yeah.
I think it's continued, we normally put that on continuing upon DEP approval or whatever they have to approve.
Yep.
I can certainly live with that personally.
My understanding is we would submit our permits once we get, you know, once we get the core permit and once we get the state permit, we'll provide copies to the board.
Okay. I mean, as far as code and planning goes?
Nothing extra from us. They concluded everything they needed to on their MyLars, and they concluded the sound study, but otherwise, it was pretty good to go. A lot of our normal things don't apply to this type of project, so.
But I mean, that condition, I think, I think we normally ask that that be on the site plan.
Well, it's subject to, actually. You can't proceed without it being approved by the DEP, am I correct?
I don't know. My expectation and hope was that we could certainly get approved and then just provide a copy of the permit.
Right, but please ask me that. The project can't go through without DEP.
Oh, yeah. Right. Yeah, we have to, we can't, we can't break ground or do anything until DEP approves it.
So if we push this forward, then he, or they, I should say, or it, if they prefer, need to have the approval by the DEP to move forward before they can break ground.
I think we could, we would incorporate that in our language tonight if we were moving forward.
We could, we could certainly include it in our language, but fact remains, they're not going to be able to move forward with the project without the approval of a higher government entity.
Right. But there's some, sometimes there can be issues where they, you know, they might want to do groundwork, which Lori says, no, you can't do until you get all the permits from the state. I mean, that's what I'm basically, basically concerned about, is that nothing goes forward that Lori disapproves from.
If it makes you feel better, we can get a marker like we almost did the last time, and just write it, the condition on there with the permanent marker, and then.
Oh, they have the MyLars with them tonight?
They have the MyLars.
They were anticipating approval.
Okay. Yep. I mean, it's generally how we do it, I just, we have that, if that's included in the motion, and Tom, it doesn't, last month, you seemed to be all okay with everything.
Yep.
Unless our other fire inspector.
I don't see it as, no.
Fire inspector.
Retired. Yeah, see, fire guy works a lot better.
Any other questions? Public meeting, Nate, is there anybody here for, for Versum?
Nobody has a hand raised.
Okay. And I don't think Chris is here for Versum. I'll close the public hearing, what is the board's wishes?
Make a motion that we approve the final plan for the major use site development entitled Bogey Brook Substation Expansion for applicant owner Versum Power with the contingency that they get approvals from the state agencies. Can I do it?
Yep. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? You good to go?
Thank you.
Quick, what were you guys, what?
I think this is probably the quick yes.
Not yet. Excuse me, fifth item is proposal amendments, chapter 56, unified development ordinance, Article III zoning districts, Article VI site development review, Article VIII performance standards, and Article 14 definitions. So we have the clean copies.
I was gonna say, I forgot to print out the comments for myself, but everything that's been incorporated, I would discuss, is now in the copies that you have. There are a few things that we left off with last time that need to be discussed. So Article III, don't think there needs to be more discussion, the only change there was the table of uses, and that was changed to reflect that there's no more small, large, or medium, it's all now one, solar energy systems, or energy storage systems, yes, solar energy systems, sorry, and the table of uses has been changed to reflect that. Article VI was not solar related, so I'll come back to that one. Article VIII is where most of the solar changes were, and we left off with the comment, received public comment from Andrew McCullough that I sent to you about stormwater and potentially wanting to reserve the rights to request more stormwater safeguards in the event of certain projects that have steep slopes or seeper grades. If you guys feel the need to discuss that further, we can. If you don't, you'd already discussed it before, I don't know if that comment made any differences, but public comments, I'm bringing it up.
I don't know, did we discuss that, Andrew's suggestion? Chris, why don't you, could you come up?
Yes, you should wait until that look up here. Sorry, I'll just sit over here to be seen.
Andrew's suggestion was that in areas where it might not be sufficient cover, that as water comes off the panels, it creates an erosion or.
So we, if I'm understanding that comment, we had mentioned that, and we get to this part of the conversation when we opened the public hearing out here, but I think what came up were like French gutters or something like that, like this had been raised in other communities, and I believe what we had heard was that it, when it was raised in other communities, it was really not an issue, that you weren't ending up with a trench on the edge of the, is, I think, what we heard last time.
Yeah, well, my, my hearing is pretty much the same, and there was like, some, some people took care of it in a more proactive way, and some people didn't, and it wasn't, it wasn't clear to me that one was significantly better than the other in all cases, so.
I mean, I certainly don't think it's a case where we have to say, we want drip edges on 15,000 solar panels, and I mean, if there's an issue, we've had this conversation with Lori, that, you know, I think code can address it, but I mean, you know, it might be a spot right in the middle of, you know, 20 acre field that might be a little lacking in topsoil and vegetation, but does that create a problem as the water drips down to the ground and then it's got another 2,000 feet to go offsite? I seriously doubt it.
And so much of it depends also on the grades and so forth, and the orientation of the solar panels on the grades, and if they're one way, it's kind of like, well, obviously the panels are facing the same direction, but the, well, underneath, the land underneath could be going one way or the other or whatever, and that makes it, that would make a difference, but I don't think you can change it for, to meet, so that you're, all, all those conditions are necessarily covered.
And I think also, we talk about these things in the, in the hypothetical quite a lot, and it occurs to me literally just now, there's a lot of these solar farms in Maine, and it's in Maine, so that's the same climate that we're in, it's probably observable on several different terrain types, what the effect actually has been. In other words, instead of guessing hypothetically, somebody could just go take a picture, and we could see, this is what it looks like two years later, in Maine, at this latitude, in this climate, this is what the ground looks like, if we wanted to go that far with it.
I mean, I don't see any need to.
Yeah, I personally am not concerned, but I mean, just, so, we have real farms that we can look at instead of guessing.
Here's a couple. I don't think I can enter that into the discussion, but, but again, it really varies. I mean, I was out in Pittsfield, which was, has been there for a thousand years, and it's kind of like, there's, but that's flat, for the most part, and it just sits there and water runs off the thing, and it just percolates down, and, you know, all done. If it's real steep or whatever, and there's probably a maximum grade that these things can be on anyway, because otherwise, they don't, it's just too hard to construct them out of the thing, that, you know, you can nod your, you can nod your head.
I can't see it, yeah.
You know, there certainly didn't seem to be any short-term effects, to your question, there didn't seem to be any short-term effects on the east-west thing, whatever road that is, on the left-hand side, you know, because that's the one you can really see, the left-hand side going out, and there didn't seem to be anything like, you know, significant drainage issues or problems or damage, so. Not to say it could be someplace sometime, but, so, bottom line is, I mean.
So anything other than the drip edges that you want to specifically?
No, I just want to point out, so if we're done with stormwater, then, one other point of discussion was finding a better reference for the best practices for decommissioning before it was the National Energy Research Lab. That lab is contracted through the U.S. Department of Energy, specifically the Office of Energy and Efficiency in Renewable Energy, so I picked that as the body to reference instead, and took out the title of the study, just said, because maybe go to the U.S. Department of Energy, that office's website, they'll just send you to their best practices, which is the National Energy Research Labs.
That's what I was gonna ask, why are we going to a third party at all? Is it because there are no federal guidelines, and the federates just direct you to a third party?
Well, they contract this third party to do it, so I guess it is their guidelines, they just didn't do it themselves.
Sure.
So I'm presuming in the future, they'll continue to contract it out, or if they don't, they'll maybe make their own, but this is the department and the office that was.
I like that, the reference that's in there now, I like a lot better than the reference that was in there before, personally.
And then I took out the reference to salvage value when discussing decommissioning costs, but those were the only new changes that came from last time. And then Molly offered some expertise and thoughts on vegetation, do you want to go over those, or do you want me to?
Either.
Okay.
They're pretty simple.
So I guess it would be section 823.4.
Which one, sorry?
Sorry?
The number again?
823.4, it's on page 39 of, yeah, Article VIII.
And so that's what this pertains to?
It's in the email, I missed it.
I have another question, actually, from Molly. Earlier in that same section, they talked about, and we had made some changes to, or changes were made to minimum buffer widths and so forth, and I think that we got denser tree lines than we had before and so forth. I assume that you have, that seems reasonable to you, because, oh, we've got trees in that sense. That would be on page 19?
Oh, page 19.
Yeah, in case you were looking at page 30, whatever, it's not going to be there. It's under rear and side buffer between residential blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, again, it sort of depends on the planting, because 10 feet of something that's deciduous is going to look different. It's going to be fuller at 10 feet versus another plant that's going to keep its leaves all year, so that would be the only hesitation, but otherwise, I think those dimensions are pretty good.
Okay, for me.
To go back to page 39. So the first suggestion is that at the end of 823.4A, is that the application of herbicides, fungicides, or pesticides prohibited, and may be subject to additional penalties of occurring within the public water supply protection area. The only issue I have with this is the last part, additional penalties, because we have to figure out what those are.
Yeah, and I took that from the 80, or 823.4 line C.
You already have additional penalties for that area?
So I assumed they existed.
Well, the only penalties we have in the ordinance is the fines of $100 per day to $2,500 per day, and each day that the problem exists, it's a new fine. Those are the only fines I have, I don't have anything that I.
I guess the idea would be a deterrent of, you know, like deterring them from using heavy doses of fertilizers in the beginning. That's, yeah, my, my take is just like, if we have the opportunity to be conservative, especially since we're enforcing mechanical maintenance, that means that like a human would be in charge of that, and humans are flawed, so you could potentially have contamination from using too much or not noticing the weather and having a huge rainstorm the day after you set seed and a mass amount of fertilizer, because chances are, when they plant, is when they would put fertilizers down versus small doses over the course of a plant's life. And the intention of the line A would be that they're being really mindful of planting a range of native perennial grasses, such as things that are meant to grow there, so in theory, these things should be able to grow there without an introduction of any type of fertilizer. The chance that they might only persist with fertilizer would mean to me that that's not a good choice for revegetation of that space. And I included fungicides, because that's a really commonly undervalued class of input, chemical input, but has a huge impact on pollinators and water sources.
So, not an expert on these matters at all, but my, my thinking here is inclusion of this language seems like a relatively safe route, and it doesn't, I, I don't feel like it would negatively impact a developer's decision to, you know, want to do this in Ellsworth, because even though it's here, if there were a proprietary situation where these were needed, they can always ask for a waiver. So the project can, it still has a mechanism to go forward, you can always ask for a waiver, but if we don't include this in the language, nobody's going to ask for additional oversight when they're doing the project, so I'd be inclined to put it in, and if it's a, if it's a proprietary issue on a given project, they can ask for a waiver, and I guess if that happened over and over again, we could look at the ordinance again, but.
Absolutely.
That'd be my.
And I'm curious on a professional's opinion.
Yeah.
For sure. But from my end, that would be awesome.
I think it's best if you put it in, and have them come ask for a waiver and explain why. Sure. I just want, okay, the, where you put in red in paragraph A is pretty much the same as what's in C. Does it need to be in both paragraphs?
It is in both paragraphs. I think C already had the public water supply.
Yeah, I mean, C already has the application herbicides, she added fungicides and pesticides prohibited.
Right.
So I mean, is, should it be in both paragraphs, or are we just kind of being redundant?
I kind of thought that A was more of like an establishing of, like revegetating these impervious surfaces.
C is kind of maintaining the vegetation.
C is maintain, yeah, which is two times that you might use those inputs.
If that's the only redundancy we have in the thing, we're pretty good shape by that.
And I think they're both, I mean, it's relevant in both instances, doesn't feel redundant to me, but.
Oh, okay, no, that's fine. Okay, but I'm gonna open the public hearing, because I want to ask Chris a question.
You can open the public hearing.
Open the public hearing. Chris, is, I mean, have you seen a copy of this, like what we're talking about? Okay, so, like from a DEP standpoint, or you can come sit at the table or?
Oh, okay. All right. This is my first time. Oh, yeah, color is the first buy, I ran out of color ink in my printer.
I mean, I'm just curious, I mean, is there any conflict with what DEP?
Yeah, I just wrote the words "like it" when you were talking.
It's brilliant, that's a good thing, right?
I, I think, you know, to Nelson's point, that, you know, developers aren't really going to be deterred by this, I would agree with you. I haven't really seen the use of herbicides used, but it doesn't mean you can't put it in here. There might be some developer that comes in that is rogue, or whatever, so for me, I don't really see any issue with passing it as is.
Do you like it?
Yeah. I think we'll get a good result, especially with the seed mix stuff.
Yep. Nate, is Steve?
Steve Blake is on the line, too, and we can loop him in for stormwater stuff if you want, so.
Would you like to have him connect?
Yep, or if there's anybody else, seeing as we're in the public hearing, if there's anybody else that wants to say something about the solar.
It's only Steve right now, so I'll get him in on the conversation.
Okay.
I want to go back, question for Chris. In your expertise or in your travels as far as solar array fields, what have you seen as far as water runoff off those panels that we're talking about, like gutters or diverting water from the panels? Have you seen anything like that?
No, not really, and I think Steve can speak to this, oh, there he is. Because the sites are vegetated enough, that is sufficient, and, Rick, you had mentioned that there certainly probably is a threshold where projects are just too steep anyway. That's true. Usually anything over like 15, 20% tends to be too expensive for the structural engineering of the racking, that it's kind of like, and it's also not really maintainable for a mower, so you have that limiting factor. I'll, I'll let Steve speak to what, how the DEP talked about this a couple years ago, because this topic came up, so.
Sure. Thanks, Chris. Everybody, Steve Blake of BH2M. Yeah, I mean, I guess one thing I would say is, pretty much all of these projects require at least a stormwater permit by rule with DEP, and that also, a component of that is the main general permit, so that, that permit focuses on erosion control standards or the basic standards. And so the way that we typically deal, deal with erosion control standards, we have kind of a toolbox approach to that, where different, different circumstances might require like check dams or some type of, some type of reinforcement. For this, I guess for the particular question about the drip edge, the projects that I've been on, that I've inspected, I haven't seen that an issue at all. When we first started looking at some of these projects with DEP two, three years ago, we had, we had thrown around a few ideas, like using a strip of, like erosion control, basically like a tube mesh material that's biodegradable, but the, the issues with the drip edge just never really came to fruition, so they, they stopped asking for that. And really, for these projects, it's just about establishing a good growth of vegetation. If you're in a, you know, time of year during construction where you can't do that, you got to make sure that your erosion control standards are really, really up to par.
That one interesting, I thought I wanted to add this into the, but there was an interesting, I don't know if anybody else saw, but there was an interesting article in the Bangor Daily that we was today. but there was an interesting article in the Bangor Daily that we was today, I believe you were quoted in it.
Yeah.
Having to do, especially what DEP is gonna look for in the future is, is having like more pass-throughs. I mean, you know, you're dealing with, okay, especially if you got five, six, seven, eight hundred, nine hundred acres of a solar farm, you know, you're blocking wildlife. I mean, I, you know, obviously the little critters are gonna go through. But it seemed like they're more interested in, you know, how can we help larger animals, you know, instead of coming to this huge blockage that they're gonna be looking at that in the future.
Yeah, I think he was also using some of the maps that like Nature Conservancy and Maine Autobahn have put together. They do have some publicly available like maps on GIS to say maybe those maps drive permitting decisions, which is what I was pushing back on in that article. I just don't like making policy based on satellite imagery. We do a tremendous amount of due diligence on the site and we do already consult with like Maine Fish and Wildlife, Maine Natural Areas Program. We already have pretty stringent rules and guidelines. I think, you know, their, their take on this is that they just want to give consideration to that, but their proposal is somewhat confusing and not very specific. Maybe it's to what you're describing, maybe they want to have some sort of like passageways. But I think it's also a, a larger issue of like where do we put these projects? It's a broader topic. There was an even, the week prior, I was in another Bangor, so that, that reporter keeps calling me for comment, which is great. I'm happy to like be a voice to the industry in Maine being based here. And that was about like cutting down forests, is that okay? And sort of, it's sort of bringing up this, she's doing a series kind of based on impact of solar across Maine. What was interesting about that article last, a couple of days ago was that it mentioned that they were trying to regulate smaller projects, so like under twenty acres and not the larger ones, like the Three Corners Project in Unity Plantation, which is, I don't know, nine hundred acres. And I thought that was really strange. Why would you want to, why wouldn't you want to regulate the larger one? Like, that seems like an opportunity for creating a wildlife passageway, literally like a fence corridor versus the smaller ones where animals just go around. So this is just an example of like, that's confusing to me. And I was talking with Dale Knapp, who you may recall was here with me a couple of years ago when we did those other projects. He's another consultant. Dale's done a ton of work in Maine for like twenty-five years. He and I are gonna go to DEP and try to get some better clarity on this, but I don't know who to meet with anymore. It's like so many people have left. Jim Byer's kind of out at this point, so we're gonna probably just connect with like Nick Levise and try to get some better clarity on that.
I mean, what was kind of interesting was, I mean, when you look at it, I mean, a nine-hundred acre piece of property, I mean, I've got a piece of property across from me. It's wooded, I mean, and it's logged. But tell you the truth, I can't envision a fence going around that whole thousand acres without some accommodation to the wildlife, you know, other than five inches off the, off the ground.
Kind of reminds me of like those high, you've seen these highways where they have an over, or like the highway goes here, but then there's an underpass, but it's just woods and grasses. And then the, and you see like the mountain lions going through and actually using it because they have these like game cams and stuff. I think that's probably more appropriate for, and I don't know what that looks like, corridors or whatever, but breaking it up into smaller pieces maybe, you know?
Like they leave a hundred foot wide path through. I mean, one of the comments, but I mean, I'm kind of disappointed that somebody was saying, well, that piece in Unity, I mean, nine hundred acres, well, it's already been wooded. Well, I'm sorry, but you know, animals live in that wood, you know?
Sure.
Deer survive on, on cut over forest. They love it.
Yeah, I'd love to see a study. The group I used to work for, Biodiversity Research Institute, I'd love to see them study a solar project like with its current condition before development and then post-condition and just see how, because maybe there's a better solution out there that nobody's even talking about about how to address this, or what is the problem too?
And there's certainly the idea that in some places you actually have grazing animals that can graze in and around solar installations. And, and the fencing and so forth is just a way different proposition because they could be out in the middle of someone's field that's being used for pasture land and you just put the solar thing on. I'm not, I don't think that those are necessarily fenced within the fence, if you get my drift.
Uh, yeah, they will still have to always have a fence just based on code.
Will they? Even, okay.
Yeah.
The fence is based upon not only local stuff and state, but also federal requirements. And it's more to keep two-footed animals out rather than four-footed.
Where would that fence be required? At the perimeter of the property or right around the solar development in the middle of the property?
It doesn't dictate, it doesn't, I don't think there's really, it's just limiting access. I think it could be a thousand feet away, yeah.
A hundred yards over there.
That's just a lot of money to spend on a fence that's bigger than it needs to be. So you typically make it closer, yeah.
I mean, I can't imagine a deer doing damage to one of these fields. What, what kind of damage are they gonna do?
They might do damage to the, to the fence. I saw, I remember seeing a, a fence that, like an agricultural style fence and it had been like, the deer tried to jump and it like landed with its belly and it like kind of collapsed it down, but not, not damage to the panels. It would be, you would have to really get in there and be notorious, yeah.
With an appropriately installed and maintained system, is there any like electrical exposure risk to animals that are walking by the boxes in the panels?
There are, behind the solar panels, there are small wires that come out of the junction box and then those get connected to ones that then go to the inverters. Those are exposed to, you know, the elements. They're on the underside. This is why whenever people talk about grazing animals, I'm like, why would we ever do goats? Because goats are nibbly. But sheep are kind of, they flock together. They're like Velcro. They're sort of more, they're sort of dumb, right? They're just like, we don't want to do anything, you know, nefarious. So sure, that, I mean, this is why we don't want parks with people walking around. Yeah, it's dangerous. Like if you touch the wrong thing, you're not gonna get shocked, but you don't want to start exposing the jacket on the, on the, on the wire for fear of some, some hazard, so.
Well, and, and, you know, just because you adopt this doesn't mean that as we get more experienced on the line that we can't revise it again, I would, I would think.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think it's an ongoing discussion. I mean, I'm trying to work with Nature Conservancy and, and those groups to understand what their concern is. That's part of my challenge is let's make sure we're defining the problem first and then let's work towards the solution. I don't think there's a lot of bridging happening between the development community and the, like, special interest nonprofits. Trying to, trying to repair that a little bit.
That's not an uncommon occurrence.
It's not, but I think it's, I think it's a worthwhile discussion to try for.
I think, and I agree with you, I think what we have here, this is a living document. It can be changed.
And I hope we know that changes are not too far down the line probably as a result of the comprehensive plan and may well be some wholesale changes, in which case this would actually be minor if we wanted to change it.
I mean, there's, I was talking to Rick earlier, there, there's an article in the Ellsworth American about a project going on in Blue Hill right now that, believe it or not, it's under litigation.
I saw that.
And it boils down to the actions of the planning board and the appeals board, but I think it also boils down to one thing is the definitions in the ordinance, because there was a lack in the definition of the ordinance and the clarity. It's what they're going on. So, you know, we may find definitions we may want to add later, et cetera, so.
Are, are we, as in like the city, aware of that and have we looked at whatever these terms and definitions are and making sure we've got them covered?
I mean, I know when Elena was here and since I've been here, we have a little list that we would like to, to update.
Might be worthwhile, like specifically looking at this case and the specific terms that they have a problem with and making sure that we don't have that same problem working.
Right. Not this time, but, yeah.
I don't think they had anything there. I don't think they had much of an ordinance at all.
No.
I would say that you are light, lightly ahead of them. That also smelled a little bit like maybe development gone bad in terms of how they participated and worked with the town and pushing, pushing lawyers and just kind of an unfriendly approach.
I figured I'd let you say that now rather than me.
Yeah, I just, I don't know, I just, you can only get so much from newspaper articles, so.
Like I said, it's Blue Hill.
Any other questions for Chris or is there anything more on the solar?
I had some comments that I was hoping to share with, with the board. So I think, I just had, I guess the first question is about the fencing. And I don't know if, did you get a chance to follow up with the Nature Conservancy on this?
No.
So the, the question for me is how to, how can I comply with what you're asking? So it asks for these two corners of the enclosed area to have wooden poles of at least five inches diameter to be installed to provide a means for wildlife to escape the enclosed area. At first I thought that meant like two poles close together so they could squeeze through, but then I thought, well, so could a human. Like if a deer can get through, a human probably could as well and that would violate any C code requirements. But then, you know, Matt had said, well, he thinks it's maybe so animals can crawl out.
I thought there was like climbing.
Climbing out of it. I mean, for me and my projects that I work on, we do ag fencing exclusively. I never proposed chain link unless explicitly asked to do chain link by the town. So I would have a thousand wooden poles around the outside of this thing. What does this look like? Does it look like just, if, let's say we wanted, somebody proposed chain link, which you are allowing. Does that just mean literally putting up a wooden pole right, like two inches away from that corner pole for the chain link pole? Is that all it is? Okay, that's fine. I, I, then I.
I think as simple as that sounds, my recollection is that's what it is. It's for something with claws to climb up and over.
Yeah.
Based off of the Autobahn suggestions, I think that's what their comments were from.
I, I think that's fine. And if, if developers, they're gonna have questions about it, they'll just come to you, Matt, and you can just clarify. So that's fine.
Can Chris along that, same line, I guess Steve is no longer with us. But I went on, on his website today and actually in his, I don't know if anybody still has, but he had some pictures. One of the fences that they have on one of their sites is wooden fences with livestock.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, ag fence, yeah.
You know, versus chain link or versus what we have up on one-eighty with the plastic. Yeah, all of them are kind of ugly if you put them around forty acres. But, I mean, you know, this is, I mean, that's kind of more of an agricultural fence.
Can I see what picture you're, what you're, what it is?
Yeah, with the wooden posts and, and the livestock fence on them.
Yeah.
I mean.
Oh, those are my pictures.
Yeah, oh, okay.
I gave those to Steve. I took those pictures.
But I mean, oh, you know, you know, if we're dealing with fencing, you know, to tell you the truth, I'd rather see something like that than.
Those are the same pictures that I sent to you guys a couple of months ago for my initial packet, yeah. Yeah, it, it's durable. It's like twelve gauge, so it's, it's not like chicken wire. It's, it is, I mean, yeah, it's pretty, pretty, I like it.
And I tell you, there's a lot of small critters that are gonna be able to scale that.
Right, well, and also you're raising it off the ground five inches, so even if they don't have to go to these corners, they're probably just gonna go into the fence. Raccoons, even boxes and stuff.
You know, we, we keep talking about getting out. Well, that, I mean, you're gonna get out, they have to get in first.
That's right, exactly.
Just waiting from the bar.
I have not seen a zoo, when I visit a solar project, it's not like I'm walking into this like massive, this like mosh pit of animals that are inside. So, yeah, that I gotta let out every day.
Well, go ahead, Chris.
Anyway, I wouldn't change it. Matt, I think it's, I think it's, it's all good. The, the second comment was gonna be about the stormwater. I think you guys are past that. And I think you've sufficiently addressed my concerns about, yeah, about that, that topic, so I won't, I won't go further into that. I did have a comment on the decommissioning. So this is section eight-two-five-point-two. It's on page forty-one. Numbers one and two right at the top there. So it says that an estimated date of decommissioning of the proposed facility based on the average lifespan of the major components. Thinking about how I would actually do this, typically what we say is that the decommissioning plan is meant to be enacted whenever the decommissioning plan is meant to be enacted. Like if there's an end of the life of the project, that's when we do it. Some equipment will probably be replaced in maybe twenty years. And so if I say, oh, this equipment is only good for twenty years, I don't want to necessarily make it think, you think that everything needs to be decommissioned.
Help me understand that. That equipment, when you imagine that, is that the electrical equipment or is that the solar panels?
Well, maybe the solar panels. Maybe some of them degrade and it's a warranty claim. You have to replace them. It wouldn't be like a wholesale, we gotta get rid of these things. But I'm thinking about the like responsive, so maybe there's an enclosure that got some rust on it and they want to replace that thing. This is, there's maintenance, right? And we also have a maintenance provision in here. I guess I just thought maybe it could say that it's based on the end of the lease or end of the site control. It, just the, the end of the life might just be deceiving in terms of like when you want to start the, when the decommissioning plan needs to be enacted.
What's the shortest, without a crazy corner case one percent example, what's the shortest lifespan you would expect an average solar farm to have? Twenty years, more?
Uh, so the solar panels are usually warranted out, warranted to like thirty-five years, so that's great. So, you know, you can work with the manufacturer on replacing them if they don't meet performance standards. But like the inverters, I think the longest lead warranty that I can get on extended warranty on an inverter is twenty years. So if the project is a forty-year lease, those, those inverters might need to get replaced. So.
So what would be the, is there an average lease date, time?
I think one of the ones we've seen so far have been twenty years with options to do, you know, additional five, additional couple of fives.
Is there anything smaller than that though, or shorter than that?
Wouldn't we be best off just to state a number, like thirty years?
Could you just put a period at the end of facility, an estimated date of decommissioning of the proposed facility? And then that's just kind of basing it on probably the end of the lease. I, I guess just getting too specific might create some unintended consequences of having to get into the weeds on that. What you really care about is that the project's not functioning anymore, either it's been abandoned, which is addressed in eight-two-five-point-three, or the lease has ended and the landowner does not want to renew, and so it's their obligation to remove it based on the decommissioning permit with the DEP. So there's other mechanisms in place that, that you can lean on, I think, without having to define dates. I, I think it's helpful to have an estimated date though, because then you can say, hey, developer, do you have a twenty-year lease or do you have a forty-year lease? And they're gonna say, that's around thirty-five years, it might be re-upped. But it could just be a period after facility.
I mean, I think that's. But we're just gonna double check real quick, because in the paragraph above this list is a reference to a Maine state statute. So we're just making sure that that language isn't pulled straight from the state statute.
My, my, my question, this would be a staff question, is what's the why? Why are we asking? What are we trying to accomplish? What are we trying to learn? And what are we gonna do with that information?
Well, if it's referencing the state statute, I'm gonna say it's best practice.
Because they tell us we have to ask that.
It's not in the state.
Well, you want to have a decommissioning, you know, to do the analysis, you have to have a date of some sort.
The DEP doesn't ask you for it.
And I think that's.
The DEP does not ask you for a date in their, the decommissioning permit.
I, what, didn't the council want something with that as a decommission, something on decommissioning?
Well, I think it's all, I mean, it gets back to the, I think the, the lease document that, I think all, like I say, I think all of the farms we've done have been twenty-year leases with options for additional five-year periods.
Right.
And so I mean, that pretty much, if it's a twenty-year lease, okay, it, it's gonna be decommissioned in twenty years unless they re-up the lease for another five years and then maybe another five years. So I think you, you know, just tie in the, the lease year with the decommission.
I'm just curious how, how we react to this information, like not to be too tongue-in-cheek about it, but I'm imagining like Lori putting a twenty-year reminder in Outlook. That'll go off Monday morning twenty years from now, like what do we actually do?
And Lori will be gone by eight. Well, you know, you can also start to argue about what is, what is, literally what does the word average mean in this context? And, you know, because that implies some distribution of end lives and on and on and on it goes, right?
I've seen leases twenty to forty years though, that's quite a span.
Chris, you're saying put a period at the end of facility and get rid of, based on the average lifespan of the major components?
Yes.
That would need to be removed.
Yeah, and then I would also strike number two. I don't think that, that, that's kind of like saying, and then provision of all things that are, that have potential for continued use, that's just, I'll think, a little bit too specific and too hard for developers to really rely on.
Well, that. I get it.
I don't know. I think that one makes sense. If they don't have potential for continued use, that's what you want to know what you're gonna do with it. I mean, if you're decommissioning and removing it, maybe the wording can be changed, but you just want to know what's gonna happen to it.
Well, I do think the modifier have potential continued use is pretty vague. And the statement, if you were just to put in this case, a period at the end of provisions for removal from the site for of all structures and equipment and systems, period, it's a provision, which is not the same thing as a requirement. You may not execute on it, but you need to have a plan to execute on it if the city says you must, is, is the way I would interpret that.
So what would maybe, just what would be an example of what you're thinking? Like roads would, would have a continued use per?
Roads, yeah, they're, they're a structure, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Right. And so any other additional buildings that, you know, can't be used past like the solar field being gone?
Well, that would be in violation of the DEP permit because DEP wants you to take everything out. So they don't want to see anything left except for, they, including roads. They want those. So they don't want to see anything left except for, they, including roads, they want those removed. So they're just gonna say, re-vegetate any disturbed structures. So that would, that, that's, that's where now you're starting.
Would, would that be, just, here's a lawyer question for an absolute lawyer. What if the landowner wants to keep the road? Must the road need be removed? Because the DEP says, I know, it's twenty-year in the future questions. I'm just curious, right?
I don't see why not.
Like, I love that road, leave it. Does the developer say, I must take it away?
Chris, so you say you don't see why they would want to keep the road?
I'm just saying that if, if we're kind of, uh, in the plain text of it, the DEP would say, please remove, please remove it. Now, common sense would say, hey, DEP, in this particular case, we want to close out our decommissioning permit, but the landowner would like to keep this, this road. They may say, well, they may have to file their own stormwater PBR so that you can close out your permit, but then they need to have their own. There's probably some.
I still think this language could cover that, because again, it's provisions, right? Provisions just means there's a plan that may or may not execute at some point to do this thing. And so if the developer has to put in a plan to take the road out, doesn't mean the road will come out, but they have to submit a plan to do so upfront.
I, I look at it as the land, so you've got nine hundred acres with a road that's going to it, on, on a guy that owns the property. He says, I want to keep the road. The next thing you're gonna see is a subdivision. Well, he's gonna use that property that's been cleared.
Probably.
Probably. It's probably taken care. He's gonna subdivide it, he's gonna start building on it. He doesn't have to build a road.
Yeah.
Because it's fundamentally there.
He's also got three-phase power.
At your expense.
Sure, yeah. I, I mean, I, I see where you're coming from, Nelson. I see where you're saying, Matt. I mean, I just want to point out that the DEP does expect the applicant to remove, remove it. So they may, they may say, we hear ya, um, but we're gonna have to work with the DEP on a case-by-case basis on this one. This is a really new permit for DEP two. They just came out with this last year. So there's a lot of like, we don't know in this. And, um.
Is there, um, someone that DEP like looks at these plan, um, plans or looks at decommissioning, they don't require like a, a plan for removal of the road beforehand? It's just like when it happens, it happens?
Um, the, the decommissioning plan needs to have a provision for showing, very broadly, it's not like a twenty-page document, but how, how you're gonna remove all of the equipment and infrastructure and restore it.
What kind of wording would be necessary for them just to copy that page and put it in whatever they give to us?
Oh, well, you think you already got it. Um, in the, in section, in the, um, decommissioning plan, it's saying, um, you're, you're, you're almost referring to Title thirty-five A, Chapter thirty-four D to, to point them at the, at the DEP's language. Um, so I think you're covered there. You're gonna get the same thing that they're gonna send. And, and, and actually, this was already something that Ellsworth required prior to even these amendments, so.
Yep. So if two are moved, we'd still get that.
Absolutely. And it, you know, the, the developer has to do it regardless of whether you're asking for it. And so they're just gonna put whatever they've sent to the DEP into the packet for the city.
So what you're suggesting is we make both of those sub-paragraphs or whatever you wanna call them, points at war, from number one and two, way simpler than they are now.
Right.
It could be. And, and maybe, maybe two is just sort of non-applicable and the developer says, we're taking everything out if we have to decommission it. And you say, okay. All right, that's fine.
If they declare there's no potential, then there's no potential.
Right, yeah, we, we gotta take it out and then that resolves it.
So leave two in, take, put a period at, at the end of the first phrase in one.
Yes. So proposed facility, period.
Yeah, exactly.
Gotcha.
And then all we're asking for is an estimated date.
Yep.
So then are we keeping number two but shortening it?
No, just keeping period in there.
I know we all want to go home pretty soon, but I think if we don't shorten it, what I'm hearing is it's in conflict with three-five A, which says it needs to be everything. So we're saying one thing up above, and then what we're saying in two is a more specific but non-compliant city-level instruction.
I think, yeah, if they're already going to essentially be turning in a provision for removal of structures and equipment from the site, I don't think you need to provide that it doesn't have a potential continued use.
So, period at the end of sentence.
Strike number two completely.
Yeah.
This is a friendly reminder that we want that document. Yeah.
Okay. Uh, and then just one last question on item six in that same chunk of requirements. The last sentence, financial assurance provisions must be noted on the final site plan and transferred with the development if it's sold. I'm just maybe not smart enough to know what that looks like on the site plan. What would we put there?
Just probably just a sentence or two, um, explaining where the financial assurance comes from. It's kind of like when we put a condition on there, imagining it's just another sentence or two.
Yeah.
Similar to a condition, but.
Okay, like, um, maybe that, like, the, the requirement of the.
Right, so like.
Assurance.
How much money is like being put away for decommissioning and where at or how it's being kept in escrow and where it can be accessed at.
Got it, got it.
Because that has to be part of the record going forward.
Yep, got it. Okay, no problem. That's it.
Well, would that be, would we always ask, you know, the decommissioning plan of the financial part of it to be reviewed by Rodman Lynchell?
Right.
I mean, so basically whatever communication, I mean, thinking of whatever letter that Ed or whoever generates or whatever the agreement is.
Well, I think it's more just for ease. The whole letter probably shouldn't. I mean, I think if you just have the, I can rewrite this to include just the two, um, details of how much and where so that the city or whoever needs it knows where the decommissioning value is. I mean, it will be somewhere else. The information will be found somewhere else too, but if it's on the plan, you know, if you're looking over these things or looking to buy or sell it, you know, what the general, uh.
The dollar amount, right.
I mean, I still think it's important that, you know, we avail our lawyer of reviewing that, that document.
Oh, so you want to add something about that? I mean, we do that, um, anyway.
Okay, I mean, I just want to make sure we continue to do that, because I suspect that'll be one question that comes from the council.
I bet that's covered in another part of your ordinance that you have the ability to send it to anybody.
It may be necessary to be a little redundant and, uh, and possibly longer-winded than need be to let it go forward in a more orderly fashion, is my guess.
So, John, did you want me to add a sentence that says like this financial assurance of performance should be reviewed by city council prior to?
Not city council.
Council, the city.
Council, look for different council.
Spelled differently.
So, yeah, with an S, not a C.
The city's.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I, I, I think that'd be, I mean, we've always asked for it, but if it's in there, I like, I like it better.
It's tidier.
Yeah.
Did we hit all the sections we were gonna look at tonight?
Uh, for solar, so.
Yeah, I'm good, thanks. I'll, I'll still stay around.
Thank you.
And then just the other, the last, um, portion of the edits, which was not solar-related, was the Article Six Site Development Plan Review, changing the threshold for, um, when a development needs to come to planning board from five thousand square feet in non-residential floor area to three thousand square feet on non-residential floor area for a five-year period.
Page seven.
It's on, yeah, page seven of Article Six.
I mean, the other reason we're looking at again is, is a discussion that Rick and I and Matt and Lori had. Lori threw out a suggestion that instead of, currently it's five thousand square feet. Anything over five thousand square feet comes to the planning board. We discussed it, lower it. Right now, we have it proposed to the council that, that at three thousand square feet, it comes into the, to the planning board. And she still has, like with the car wash, I mean, that was maybe two thousand square feet, but Lori brought that to us. Her idea was instead of anything between three thousand, instead of mandating that anything over three thousand square feet would come to us, that anything between three thousand, five thousand would go to, well, she talked about me and Rick, but I guess it'd be the chairman and vice chairman to decide whether it does. Did you want to explain it more? It was your idea.
Well, I, the car wash is a perfect example. It was fifteen hundred square feet. And I was so concerned about the traffic at that location that I wanted it reviewed by you folks to vet out any issues with traffic. And if I were to receive something that was between three thousand and five thousand and something really stuck out that I would be worried about, I certainly don't want complaints. You know, that's not what I'm looking for. And so I want to be able to make everyone comfortable that it's being reviewed thoroughly. And, um, if I could have maybe some chatting with a couple of planning board members just to, you know, go over it and if you think it needs to come, or I tell the people to bring it as a sketch plan, you know, on to an agenda item. You know, I, there's a lot of things that can happen and that I would be more than willing to do.
Right, how we structure that conversation, I guess, would just depend on what you all feel most comfortable with. If it's something that the whole board wants to be a part of, it could be like a standing agenda item at the end of the meeting every month.
I mean, I'd rather leave that section there that, that at three thousand, and then, and this all, the council may say, yeah, forget it. You know, we're keeping it at five thousand. We may increase it to ten thousand, who knows? But I'd rather keep it at three thousand and, I mean, I think it was a great idea that you brought the, the car wash to the, the planning board. And, and I would think any business, you know, any development that, that you weren't comfortable with and wanted to refer it to the planning board for, for a major site, I mean, it was fine. I mean, you know, I don't have a problem with, you know, getting some input from, from a chair or vice chair.
A little bit behind the logic here. I, I thought you already had the authority to, if you just decide this project needs to come here, it comes here, at any size.
But what he wanted to do was lower my threshold from five thousand to three thousand.
For the required.
And, and somebody had come in with a four thousand nine hundred square feet.
Yes.
Four thousand nine hundred fifty square feet.
Just randomly come up with a really interesting number that was just.
Yeah, not to rabbit hole this too much, but so, so there's a couple of, uh, topics here. I think that, this is one of them, but there's a different bucket. And the other bucket that I have been concerned with and we talked about before, and this is the, uh, that like the Medicare building that went down, down there is, if you, and I'm gonna make a crazy example to make my point, right? But, and it would be, so the current standard's five thousand, right? So you do a forty-nine hundred foot project a year for ten years, and you end up with a forty-nine thousand square foot structure that's never come before the planning board. That's sort of almost happened, not to that scale, but it's sort of almost happened now. And that's my concern. Like, how do we capture and become aware of that and make sure that that doesn't happen?
Right. So there is already, um, regulations that if you come with a forty-nine hundred square foot building and within a five-year period come with any more, that's gonna throw me over the five thousand or three thousand or whatever my limitation is, it's automatically added altogether.
So you look at the aggregate.
Yes.
Okay, I've got it. Okay.
And that's the second part of that amendment, is that we're codifying what Lori already does.
Okay.
Yes.
Great.
So the question is, do we go with three thousand period, three thousand to five thousand, or five thousand period? Is that?
Right, I mean, it's, it's a discussion we could have later. We could just take it to council, see what they say. If they say no, we come back, look at that portion again.
I think we keep it as his and, like I say.
Which is three thousand?
Yes.
Okay. And here with everything that comes up.
Who knows what the council is gonna, they may, you know, somebody may say, that's too low a threshold. You know, we don't want a burden that's gonna drive business away. I don't think so.
Or they may not.
I don't think so.
I don't think so either. I mean, I, I think the city needs to grab a hold of, you know, better development, you know. I mean, if, I mean, the guy that put in the car wash, I mean, he was great to work with.
Yes.
But if he had just come in for, for a building permit, there was a lot of things that he, you know, heard from the neighbors, heard from the board. You know, we got more queue there. You know, the building got pushed, you know, got rid of a vacuum or two, you know, having a better landscape.
There's a whole bunch of things that got changed.
That might not have happened if it just applied for a building permit. So, I mean, that's the type of, you know, good development. You know, I want to make sure we continue to, to bring to the city.
And not only that, that negotiation for additional things happens here in, you know, the open view, right?
An open forum where everybody can get up and talk when, if it wasn't, it was such a small square footage product, a process, um, proposal that I would not have even sent out normally a butters notices. You know, that's not something I do when I get a building permit request. So with this, having it come before you and have it all vetted out in an open forum, it just, it was perfect.
Can you imagine if, if you were just permitted that and what the neighbors would have?
I can imagine.
No.
Discretion, discretion on your part was great. I mean, and it needs to be, it needs to continue. If it's a twelve hundred square foot building and you question it, it needs to come.
Yeah.
No, it's true.
Regardless, you know.
All right. And so that's it for the ordinances.
So.
Well, is that guys next?
Well, I think we, I'll close with public hearing.
That was all public hearing, huh?
Yeah.
Expansive.
Okay, so we, we have to make a recommendation. So do we want to do this article by article?
Well, I wanted to go into that first. So, um, this won't be able to make it to council for Jan, or for December because the mailing notice to the city can't happen in time. It needs a thirteen-day notice. So you can either wait till January for me to make all these changes and just in anticipation of it being approved in January, I've already scheduled the mailing. And that can still get thirteen days' notice out. Or you can try and approve it now and just trust me to make the changes and then we'll go from there.
I think we trust him to make the changes and do this as a package, as opposed to individual.
Well, well, I guess I'll disagree with on that one. Uh, we can schedule it back over to the council in January, but I think we should, unless we want to list in the motion what changes we're asking Matt to make, I think we should be able to.
Do you mean explicitly?
Well, I, I think it's, because we have to prove it, make it a recommendation with the council, we should have the.
The final copy.
Yeah, the exact.
If we go that route too, then, I mean, you could do the work, but while you're doing the work, you could also jot down, these are the changes I made. And then, because that would be super handy for us when we make the motion, if we, if we have that list right in front of us.
So I mean, when, we got clean copies and, you know, the big ones that Elena did. Just so you know that when this goes to the council, they need to see what.
I have a, yeah.
Okay, a smaller version of that.
The digital version of this had the comments where I spelled out the jotting of what.
It's almost like turn-on-track changes, export the changes, give a snapshot sheet, and then well-incorporate it in the motion.
Right. Yeah. They'll, because the council will want to see those changes.
Right.
Yeah, that's right. So what is our recommendation right now? Do we just hold it until the next meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
To the table, listen.
And then, but, but set up the, I, I don't see, see where this is not gonna pass next month, so do the notification that you have to do for the January.
And I have another question. Um, I suspect we may not have projects for January. Would you prefer if I tried to schedule a special meeting, if possible, in December, or just want to wait till January fourth and do a meeting?
I'd wait January fourth. Wait, is January fourth better for you? It gives you time to put stuff together and?
Yeah, I'll take more time.
I would be totally okay with a super short meeting on January fourth.
I would like to have a long meeting.
Put together a puppet show.
Come on.
Any other staff comments?
Um, update on comp plan now. Um, the RFP is going through draft and revision process. I'll be sending it to you all soon to get your feedback. Um, and then I presume I'll send to the council probably before the December meeting, but if not, I'll have it for the December meeting and we'll probably talk about it there. And then some point fish touches on that and trying to get a better idea of what our timeline is gonna be for the RFP process. Then hopefully that'll be done by the end of December. Hopefully, it might be released even, by the end of, well, by the beginning of January, uh, by our next meeting, so.
Can it be released before, uh, before council sees the RFP or, or do they even see the RFP?
I'm gonna give them the RFP.
Okay, do they have to vote on it or anything?
They don't have to vote on it now, but I will get their feedback on it.
Okay.
And then, uh, either while the R, probably while the RFP is out, hopefully we'll be forming the, um, steering committee. So tonight, you could actually pick your two people to be on the steering committee. So tonight, you could actually pick your two people to be on the steering committee, so I know ahead of time. Much do you, would you like me to explain the steering committee?
I nominate me and him, or him and me, if you prefer.
Well, go ahead and say it.
Unless it's volunteer.
I will second that nomination.
Or, or break it down if need be. And let me just say, um, you know, I think it would be good to have that committee as established as you can.
Right.
When the RFP goes out, so that the responders to the RFP know who, who their audience is.
Kind of.
Yeah.
So I, the public portion of it may not be complete by the time the RFP goes out, with the public turning and applications, but the council members and the planning board members should be.
Oh, right, yeah, 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 no, I understand that they may not all be in place.
Right, all right.
Now, just remember, too, in January, we do new chairman and vice chair and secretary.
I'm sure it'll be a big shakeup.
I doubt it.
You start campaigning now.
Um, but that's all I've got.
Process question for tonight? Do we need to move to, um, table item five, or we just leave it alone?
Um, and so far with it, we've just kind of.
There was no, there was no, um, motion, so.
There's no action on it.
Nothing on the table, right?
Yeah, no action was taken, yeah.
I want you to know that I came equipped, ready to give you this.
Thank you.
All my copious comments on your RFP, but.
And maybe before we close, I just wanna add, uh, thank Chris for all your assistance, expertise.
Yeah, truly.
It's greatly appreciated.
It's the best solar ordinance in the region.
Could you, could you learn about some other stuff, too, so that we can use you for something else as well?
I, I've been hearing about all of it.
Hey, we got you on speed dial.
Yeah.
Uh, the motion for adjournment.
Please.
Second. The whole table.
All right, you have two milers, that's for everybody assigned.
Okay.